I think I lost sight there.
Your move then.
So I'm very good. I was here on the recording. Actually, I'm getting some pretty serious.
This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening. This is the virtual board of select meeting for Monday, June 22nd. At this time, all participants will be muted and the meetings will be closed to new attendees. As indicated on tonight's agenda and currently on channel 18, we will be inviting people for public comment. To get into line to speak, you must send an email to comment@town.harwich MA.us. Currently, I have no requests to speak tonight by email. I'll let you know if that changes. Mr. Chairman, meeting is yours, sir.
Thank you, Scott. As Scott said, we reopened the June 22nd, 2020 Harwich Board and Selectment Meeting at 6:00. We then moved to executive session discussing three items. First item was respect to collective bargaining for Harwich Employees Association and the Highways and Maintenance Employees Association. If an open meeting would be detrimental effect to the town's bargaining position. The second item was discussion on respect to collective bargaining for all town unions. If an open session would have detrimental effects on the bargaining position. And the third item was discussions to conduct strategy sessions for contract negotiations for non-union personnel, namely the finance director, the fire chief-elect, and the police chief. We discuss each of these three items and the discussions will continue for the next several meetings. I will now ask you to join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. We'll move next to the weekly briefing and as Joe, as usual, that's spread up between you and Megan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and quite a bit of activity to update on with the pop-up testing site that occurred last week, as well as the governor's announcement that we are now in phase two, step two, which allows for indoor services, indoor food service at restaurants. And late breaking news, if you will, the board, you all may recall that a few weeks back, I had asked the board to consider the concept of giving me authority to sign emergency contracts. And, you know, if this occurred, if something occurred before a board meeting or was not able to come before the board fully. So this evening, we have one of those. I'm bringing this up first because I've asked Link to be on the call and I know he has a family obligation. So as you know, the town went out on comm's buy through the state government to try and locate janitorial custodial services, but specifically for the purpose of disinfection, disinfecting cleaning of our beach bathrooms. I'm sure we've all heard, we've had complaints over the past weekend that the bathrooms aren't open and that's because we didn't have the staff in place or the vendors in place. So two things, I know Link can speak to a moment where I would say that we can open the beach bathrooms as early as tomorrow, June 23rd, and that's with regular cleaning and that we are in a position to have disinfection cleaning as early as Saturday, June 27th, if the board has consensus on the contract. So first to the contract. This morning, Bob Lawton and Griffin Rider went through the bids that were received through the comm's buy system for comfort station janitorial services. There was one bid received, but the town requested it more than 10 solicitations. So given the dollar amounts in question, they've met the requirements for procurement, meaning they sought more than three quotes and received at least one. The bid, it's a twofold bid, meaning the town asked them to provide a quote based on disinfecting cleaning twice daily versus disinfecting cleaning for three times a day. So the gold standard, as Megan will tell you in a moment, is the three times a day. If we are willing to accept their bid, their bid was for $88,574 for two cleanings per day. And three cleanings would be $118,246. And the timeframe for this is June 27th through Columbus Day weekend. So it would get us through the busy season that we're about to embark upon and into the early fall. So again, we're looking to execute a contract with this vendor, but it's nothing that would have come before the board for the board to vet, given the dollar amount. I do have materials here that I got this evening and we have staff present to answer any questions you have. I will tell you that Link has devised a plan where he is able to identify staff as several of you had asked weeks ago. We didn't have staff in place then, but we could have staff doing the once a day this week. Or if the board simply wants to do once a day, which is not my recommendation, we do have staff that could do that with some minimal cost of overtime and otherwise. So there's a range of options I could go through, the lowest being $40,000, being the town does it, all the way up to the $118,000 for the vendor to do it three times a day. And meaning the gold standard, the CDC requirements on cleaning and disinfecting areas to diminish the risk of COVID-19.
Your intent is to throw to Link now, or Don, do you have a question?
Yeah, I just want a clarification. It's, I think I know the answer, but if we do the three times a day, that would be CARES Act eligible for reimbursement?
So we know that a portion of it could be CARES Act eligible. We did not ever conceive or anticipate disinfecting. And so we would absolutely make the argument that we would be putting in for CARES Act funding on disinfecting. Now, I would argue that we stand a better chance for reimbursement if we go through a contract than if we go through staff, but either is within the realm of possibility.
Okay, Michael?
We'd also be going from one time a day normally to three times a day.
Correct, for the purpose of disinfection.
And then the staff that cleaned the bathroom last year, where would they be reallocated to?
So I'll try this, but Link is on the call. So staff that could do it this year, it's not the same staff as last year. One individual is returning, the other one is not comfortable doing this level of cleaning, but could clean another area, so we have another employee that'd be willing to do that. Link, you want to talk to the specifics of the employees?
Hi. Yeah, we made some provision to shuffle some people around. We had one employee that was not interested due to COVID-19 threats, but we've made some other provisions and can probably get to the same level we did last year. Certainly not to any of the three times a day disinfecting that was recommended by the state.
Michael?
So Link, specifically, if we hire this company and do this contract, the employee that you're talking about that would do it once a day, and Joe just mentioned in the amount of $40,000 versus the $118,000, what would that employee do? Where would they be reassigned to?
The staff is already working, is already working, selecting a castle, and I was just doing a lot of shuffling around to try to eliminate out of lemon, so to speak. If you, you want specific assignments?
No, I don't, I guess I don't need specific assignments, Link, but what we're being asked for is to approve a $118,000 contract rather than you shuffling, and thank you for shuffling, and spending $40,000. If we're able to shuffle and spend the, and spend the $40,000 internally versus for the one time a day, I would think we'd be able to shuffle in these times and give a more specific answer as to where they would be. And maybe they would be in the cultural center, maybe they would be in the community center, maybe they would be in town hall. But I guess I'm just looking for an answer to help me understand the $80,000 difference that I'm about to vote on.
Okay, thank you for the question. It's not, not the comparison. What I, what I said we could do was one cleaning per day along with a disinfecting. And what is the lower end of the contract of 88 was two cleanings per day with them supplying everything. The $118,000 was a three cleanings per day. So we, what I said we could, we could get together was simply one cleaning per day to the state, hopefully the same level we offered last year.
Okay. Megan, you're going to weigh in. Is there a, I guess my question is, we have a lot of bathrooms we're talking about, whether it's beaches or Harbor Master Shop or Wishmere Harbor, for instance. Are they all treated the same?
This was nine comfort stations. I believe the only one, the public one that was taken out may have been Brooks Park or the one being the community center. One or the other was not included. But all the beach bathrooms, the one at Allen Harbor was, the Harbor Master, all the comfort stations at the beaches.
And we have Griffin Rider on the phone who can speak about the specs that were sent out to get these bids back, if you'd like.
Which one was left out? Griffin?
Griffin, are you able to hear us?
I didn't hear your last question.
Which, which of the bathrooms was left out of the bid?
I think the only one, I believe the only one that was left out is the Brooks Park bathroom that isn't open yet. The Brooks, Brooks Park South, so to speak, is included. Brooks Park North is not included.
And we're not going to plan on opening that?
We're, we're working with the state now to open that through a variance process.
Oh, okay, oh, that's.
But we're not there yet.
All right.
What's the difference in, by may, what drives a three, because we live with two times a day? Was that, you know, what drives the risk factor and the expense on that?
Megan, can you speak to twice a day versus three times a day?
Sure. Just to back up one second as well, the cleanings, the normal, I should say, normal cleanings at the bathrooms we're getting in years past didn't always include a disinfection step. And that's what's different this year from the, these contracts from years past is we've, we've been able to maintain a once-a-day bathroom cleaning for the comfort stations, but it didn't include the disinfection step, which is COVID compliant. We, we need to protect our residents and guests by disinfecting at least daily, is what CDC says, at least daily. And after speaking with Link and Sean and Eric Beebe about the bathroom usage, it was clear to me that there are four to five bathrooms that, that get to the point of needing three times a day in order to stay sanitary. There's a few bathrooms that are less used, that could probably get away with once a day. But there are four bathroom, bathhouses that are used so frequently that I don't think twice a day is going to be able to, to cut the safety that we need to, that we need to provide. If we do have to go to twice rather than three times, I would still recommend the town send someone over to just do trash in those, those few bathhouses that get really high use.
Yeah, I just look at, yeah, I was on Red River Beach this morning, that was packed, versus the bathroom at Wishmere Harbor, for instance, which gets maybe a handful throughout the day. It doesn't seem we have the same, you'd have to do, treat them the same way, is the reason I was asking the question. Let me go ahead for Steve.
Megan, could you just indicate what, what's the difference between what we call a cleaning and what makes it a disinfecting? What is it that they do?
Sure. So a cleaning is used, you use household cleaners and soap and water and get off the dirt and everything. But a disinfection step will kill all of the germs, the bacteria and the viruses. And our previous cleaning, even though we would use a disinfectant, sometimes it wasn't left on long enough. It wasn't done to the CDC and EPA standards. It takes more time, so it's understandable that the staff that we have could, could do a cleaning job to get to all of these bathrooms with just this amount of staff. But the disinfection step takes an extra, at least 10 minutes, 10 to 20 minutes per bathroom. So it does, it takes more time. It's a, it's an added chemical that disinfects, it takes away all the bacteria and viruses.
Okay, so we're not, in doing a disinfectant, we're not talking about any special equipment or any special licensing or certification that the staff has? Just a heightened level of training and a different mop bucket of cleaning solutions?
Exactly. It's, it's a heightened level of training and different, different chemical use.
Ed, did I answer your question?
Yeah.
Steve?
Was there any thought when we put out these bids to, you know, designate four that were used much more and five that weren't used that much and say to the company, well, you know, we'd like these five cleaned once a day and these five cleaned, or these four cleaned three times a day?
Griffin, can you speak to the level of specifications? Griffin, are you still available?
The 10 bathrooms were, were just grouped together as one and just as either two cleanings per day or three cleanings per day. It's off of state contract. We could negotiate with the bidder to, to change those, those levels, but working with Link's team and Megan, this is, this is the way that we did it.
Can we go back and pick out the four that Megan's, and maybe fine tune that a bit?
Yeah, I mean, if, if Megan is comfortable with, you know, fewer cleanings on certain bathrooms, why not take advantage of it? I mean, it could save us, you know, $20,000, $30,000, $40,000, who knows?
Don?
I agree with Stephen. The only problem I have with this is how long would it take to go back and renegotiate? Because people are using the informal bathroom behind the bathroom, according to some of my sources at the beach.
That's expected, yeah.
Which is really not a good idea.
Absolutely.
Joe, can you answer that?
Well, yes, I can answer it, and I would say that it depends on the willingness of the board. Again, the overall concept here is there's a contract that we're desiring to have executed ahead of the opening of the beaches for the season by Saturday. Just to give the board all the information, when I vetted this with staff today, we came up with four options. And the first option is the town only. We priced that at about $40,000. And that's the two staff members, one that does it during the week and one in the weekend. And the town providing the supplies, and that's about, the supply part of that is the 20 grand, is about a third of Link's overall supply budget. The second item we came up with was the twice a day by the vendor only, and that's the $88,500, I believe. That would be twice a day, every day, all locations through October 12th. The third option we came up with is if we want to get to the gold standard, so to speak, we could do the vendor option of the $88,500 plus staff. That is the least desirable option, but we vetted it. And then lastly, of course, is the vendor just doing all three. So if the board is willing to allow me to have discussions with the vendor to, to get to a contract by the Saturday, I can certainly get into, as Griffin has said, you know, the bids go out under my name as the interim administrator because that's the standard we use. So if the board was willing to allow me to discuss with them, we could probably come up with a number that is lower than 88, but not lower down to 40.
Yeah. Speaking for me, I, I'm comfortable with that. I just don't see the need to treat all bathrooms the same across town, because we all see different uses. Michael?
Yeah, I would agree with Larry. I'd be willing to approve a contract tonight, subject to renegotiation. I think we just heard that we don't have to treat all bathrooms the same. So I think now that they're interested, they want the contract, why couldn't the town administrator go back and say, these four bathrooms, three times a week? These six bathrooms, maybe twice a week or once a week, with staff doing the difference? Because, back to my question.
A day. He means, he means.
A day, sorry. Back to my original question to Link, we did scramble, he did find someone to do it, and it was going to cost roughly $40,000. We could still use that same person to do the difference in the other bathrooms. So I think if Joe hears what we're saying and goes back and tries to negotiate a better contract for us, for the ones that matter, I would be comfortable with that.
So, is that, we move to let throwback in Joel's discretion?
This is a topic that the chair did not reasonably anticipate, which means you're doing it tonight. It'll be recapped again next week, the requirements of the open meeting.
Okay.
But will that, will that prevent us from opening?
No, we'll, we'll move ahead. Yeah, if it's an action, we'll confirm it next week.
So I seconded his motion.
Ed, did you have more discussion?
Well, just for clarification, the $40,000 that it would cost for, for the town staff to do, that's what it would normally cost us in any particular year. That's what we spent last year and. Link?
No, that's only, we're only counting, that was about and a half, $20,000 on supplies, $20,000 on labor, which is not full-time labor, so rather cheap, no benefit. But that was only from June 26th to Columbus Day. Normally, we open the restroom sometime in April, so you'd add, you know, two months onto that price tag.
But for the time period, the $40,000 is similar to what we spent last year for the same time period.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I think that's a reasonable assumption. Yes, sir.
Yeah, go ahead, Ed, then, Michael.
So, you know, if, in, in the off case that we don't get reimbursed and, and we're able to negotiate a contract at $70,000 or $75,000, the really marginal cost to the town is only going to be an additional 35 because we're essentially already in for, for the 40.
I'm not sure. Michael?
Just ask the town administrator, provide us with where we are with beach sticker sales. Beach sticker part of this next week, if we could just get an update on where we are with the sticker sales, I'd appreciate that.
You know, I think, my comment is, I think more to where you're going with this is, I'd like to throw this back to the discretion of Joel to work out the contract and, and then also be mindful of where we have our best chance of getting reimbursement. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Link, as usual.
And Link, before you go, I would say the only other takeaway from this is we're telling the general public that we will have beach bathrooms open starting Tuesday, June 23rd, and the level of care will ramp up starting Saturday, June 27th.
Right. Thanks for, you mentioned that in passing initially, Joe, but it's good to reinforce that. Okay, we'll move on to the next agenda or continuation of this discussion?
No, it's more under weekly briefing. As you can see in the packet, there was the Outer Cape Health Services was one of 50 statewide pop-up testing sites. As I updated you last week, we had CEO Pat Nadel from Outer Cape Health. Pat was good enough to update me by email, which you can see in the packet. And by all accounts, by all involved, it was a tremendous success. You can see that they, Pat had told us last week that they were looking for 1,500 tests, and that was to be shared amongst their three locations. Well, they ended up doing 1,255 tests in Towne, Harwich alone. And despite how many that was, it was very orderly and very well coordinated. And so I do want to draw attention to the staff members that are listed in that email. And the first among those should be Deputy Chief Goncodyne from the Police Department, who served as incident commander for both days for that and was the one that drew up the operational plan and partnered with Outer Cape Health. But again, as you can see, we've got our health director, our police chief, our fire chief, deputy police chief, deputy fire chief, town engineer, TPW director, harbor master, and health department staff in addition to myself. So everybody pulled together, it was a great job and be interesting to see how the, what sort of results those tests yield. But we made every assurance that those 1,255 tests that occurred did not equate to a mass gathering. So it was an excellent job by all. And then before I turn it over to Megan, the other announcement I'd like to put out there, and we're going to get into it in a moment, but, you know, we've been striving to get this building open. And for you gentlemen, if you've been around the building, you'll notice we've got the hand sanitizers in place. We've had the plexiglass in place. Now we have all of our signage and everything that we need to meet, for me to be able to certify to the state that we're able to reopen. So we are working towards reopening town hall effective next Monday. So we're looking to open town hall and some other town buildings on Monday, June 27th. We're trying to finalize all of that this week. And I'm hoping to release what I hope to be the last COVID guidance document I have to release, which I believe would be number 14, talking about buildings coming back online, which is a great thing to say. And then, as I said before, the governor came out on Friday with a couple of announcements, phase two, step two for restaurants, but also had identified changes in the occupancy that we were talking about before. We're no longer at 25%. We're now at 50%, so we can have 16 people from the general public in the building, in this building as an example. And we have, we believe, every office accounted for, accounted for where they have occupancy issues. So it's another thing that Megan and I will hope to roll out to the board and then everybody after that later this week. So a lot happening, a lot of progress being made, and unless you have questions for me, I'll turn it over.
I have a quick question. Wasn't there also an announcement on indoor dining?
That was the phase two, step two.
That's fair, okay. And so all of our restaurants will be able to open indoor dining?
So theoretically, they're able to open today in the packet. You can see the guidance that they're required to, to meet. It is the similar information, let me just get it here, similar information that was sent to restaurants. See if I did it again. Here we go. So up on the board there, the mandatory safety standards, and you can see the first line there says, when indoor table service is permitted. So Megan will be able to speak to it better than I, excuse me, as to what was sent out to the establishments, and I know we had an update from ABCC on that. So they theoretically could have started today.
Thanks, Joe.
With that, I'll turn it over to Megan, and Megan, before you start, I want to tell Scott. Scott, the meeting is locked and someone's looking to join, so I didn't know if you wanted to unlock that for them.
I'll do that, yes, sir.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to Megan.
Hi, guys. The indoor dining was open today for the first time. Indoor dining is pretty much the same as outdoor dining as far as six feet apart per table, no more than six people per, per table. And if you can put a barrier, a plastic barrier in between tables, you can be closer than six feet in between parties. So they didn't put a occupancy limit or a maximum occupancy limit on the indoor dining. They left it up to the establishments to see what they can fit as far as placing people six feet apart and having minimum, a maximum of six people per table. Same rules apply for bars. There's been some confusion about bars, mostly the confusion's on the part of the public, seeing people at bars and thinking they're open. And in, in most cases, establishments have been able to utilize an outdoor bar as a table, so there's not a bartender, there's not someone behind the bar serving drinks, but they are able to seat people at the bar if those parties, again, can be six feet apart or more. We have continued to get social distancing and mask complaints about. We have continued to get social distancing and mask complaints about many establishments, and we are following up with them as best we can. We send them an email with the complainant, with the complaint, not the person's name, but the complaint and when it was and what the complaint entailed. And usually, we'll get a response right back from the establishment with an explanation of it. Sometimes it's a good explanation, and sometimes it's not. But we're trying to educate as we go and try to gain compliance with education, rather than fines with the social distancing and the masks. Office spaces, Joe talked about, and fifty percent or of office spaces can now be open. And then, and some other parts of retail can open as well. There's been a few other reopening abilities in phase two, step two. And the governor said that phase three will be announced no earlier than July sixth. So if you're getting questions on when that's going to happen, there's not a hard answer on that. It's just based on the data and no earlier than July sixth. And phase three allows for a lot more entertainment type of activities, because still, I want to remind everyone, live entertainment is not allowed indoors or outdoors at restaurants at this time. I'm going to pause there before I go to my numbers, in case anyone has questions about those things I just talked about.
Question for Megan?
Yes.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The governor's guidance still with a robust sound system like DJ style, as compared to background music that we were talking about last week. Is that still considered to be different from live entertainment, even though outside it would have the same decimal effect?
They don't distinguish between recorded music or live music. They just say live performances. So in my opinion, a background noise, a background music is one thing. But when you have a DJ playing or dance type of music, that's more like entertainment. And dancing is not allowed right now. So you could kind of cover it under two ways like that. But it's not a loudness level, it's an entertainment factor.
I just wanted to get that out there, so that somebody, maybe one of our license holders might think that they're being picked on. But I think ultimately, we need to hear this upfront, that these are the basic rules that everybody's got to abide by.
Right. And anything that encourages people to congregate or gather is frowned upon anyway.
Thanks.
Thank you, Megan, we'll move on then.
All right, so our COVID numbers, Massachusetts, we are up at a hundred thousand seven, one hundred seven thousand two hundred ten cases and seven thousand eight hundred seventy-four deaths. Barnstable County, we're at fifteen hundred seventeen cases and a hundred and thirty-eight deaths. And in Harwich, we did go up to one twenty-three. So that's two new cases in the last seven days. And many of them have recovered. I've gotten the updated information from Wingate, and all residents there have recovered, and staff have recovered as well. So we have ninety-six of the hundred and twenty-three have recovered since the beginning of COVID nineteen in March. Twenty-four deaths, and that leaves three active cases. So we're doing, we're doing well, still, keeping our numbers down. And just remind everyone that masks are required when you're in public, and you can't social distance. So if you're walking by someone on the sidewalk and you're within six feet of someone, you should put your mask on. We do get plenty of complaints about that. We are looking to have signs, electronic signs placed on either side, on either end of Route twenty-eight in the next week. We're just looking for proper placement, just reminding people that face coverings are a requirement of the state. And when you can't social distance, you should have your mask on. And then, the last thing, I wanted to just mention that the pop-up testing last week, I was very happy to put the Cape Cod Medical Reserve Corps in coordination with Outer Cape Health. They provided three to five volunteers per day, and they really helped make that clinic go smoothly. And it was a very good, good opportunity for everyone to collaborate.
Mr. Chairman, if I can build off of that, I realize I would also recognize the CERT team. I know Deputy Chief Goncodyne had a number of volunteers as well. So I want to make sure that those folks are recognized for their efforts.
It's a good effort, and I think, Megan, we can take some credit for having the pool clinics we had for years at the community center, learning how to handle these types of situations. So we ought to praise our past as well, I think.
Absolutely. And then, one last COVID update I have for you. You'd asked about the outreach coordinator at the Council on Aging. And a few weeks ago, I want to say it's probably going on a month now, I got Amy Mitchell in touch with the Academic Public Health Volunteer Corps. It's through the Department of Public Health. And they, over the last few months, have been gaining volunteers. People want to help out throughout this pandemic. And a lot of graduate students and masters in public health volunteer through this program. And they are hooked up now with Council on Aging to do senior wellness calls. It's a hole that was sort of made in a, because of a vacancy in the department. And with the financial situation we're in now, not able to fill that as quickly as we'd like. We were able to get a volunteer group to take over wellness calls. And they are able to do a variety of other things. If Emily is able to give them tasks to do, they're able to help out in the social worker sort of capacity.
So Megan, just to clarify, this is broader than simply the COVID nineteen, then? This is senior wellness in general?
They focus mostly on, they were born out of contact tracing. And then they found out that a lot of towns had needs that weren't being met for making sure seniors had a good idea of what COVID was, for communication. So they use kind of this platform to give services to towns that are in need of any type of service. So it's not just COVID-related, but they are able to provide COVID resources. But if they make just senior outreach calls, no need to be on a COVID-type of list. They just make calls and make sure everyone knows about the governor's orders. And then the conversation turns to, do you need anything? Do you need groceries? Do you need pharmacy, that sort of stuff? And it just all, it all works well together.
That's great. It's such a critical need, reaching out, so. Michael?
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Megan, for bringing this up, and thank you for the update. I think at some point, it would be helpful for the board if Emily Mitchell had some words about this. I'm not sure that, you just mentioned gaining volunteers. I guess I would ask, who coordinates this? Is this additional duties for our Council on Aging Director by managing this? That's one question I have. Second is the need for the Towne Harwich being met? I think when we originally talked about this, it was mentioned that this wasn't an essential position, and I had concern about that. I don't think the conversation really ever went anywhere, and I don't believe we ever really got any information on it. So maybe at some point, we could have the Council on Aging Director give us an update on her thoughts on this, as the department head?
Sure, makes sense. Megan, Joel, comment?
Nope, just putting my notes here to follow up on that.
Okay.
Sure.
All right. Yeah, it's always good to be sure we're coordinated. All right, thank you, Megan, is that?
That's all the COVID updates I have for you.
That's enough.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I can transition while we still have Megan here. The next topic would be in support of the business community. We have our friend from the Chamber of Commerce, the executive director here. Not sure if Cindy had a chance to talk to anyone today about phase two, step two, but that's our next item on the agenda.
Cindy Fuller, yours?
Good evening, everyone. Yes, actually, I've been out and about with the restaurants. They were mostly this weekend preparing and getting ready for today. Many are thrilled with the prospect of having the inside, as well as their continuing their outside. Some that weren't doing the outside, they were very excited today, because they got to now have more than just takeout, which they survived with. But definitely having guests inside their restaurant was a plus today. So that was a great bit of information on Friday from the governor. As Megan mentioned, he didn't cap an occupancy, which was great news, too. So they could really maximize the best they can with that six-foot distance between the tables. The other item with that, too, is the close contact, which that adds dressing rooms by appointment only for retailers. So any of our shops that need to have people try on things, they can now add that service as well. This weekend, I went out and visited a lot of the retailers, did some social live videos with them. RPM is doing appointment only for their stores still. And then stores like Harwich Paint and Decorating has an ambassador at the door, making sure that the amount of people in is the correct amount, one in, two out, and all that kind of fun stuff. So the businesses are certainly adjusting to all the guidelines and the protocols. Very proud of all of them for making it through this. And that takes care of the COVID piece and the restaurants, both inside. I'm making sure I have all of my notes here. Busy weekend, this past weekend, definitely saw the increase in people. Anyone that was down in Harwich Port would have noticed the parking lot by my building was full both weekend days. So that was a nice thing to see, nice thing to see, all the shopping bags, people at the restaurants. Many did have masks, there were some that didn't. So just educating them on all of that again. It's interesting how many calls I get from people in Massachusetts that ask, what are the things that you need to do? Even though they know they're in the state, it's the same thing down here, too. So just educating people on that. The big questions over the weekend, beach stickers. So I just, I know that we've touched on it, but I did want to reiterate this, since it will go live on YouTube. Beach stickers for residents and taxpayers is online through the town website, or if you download the form and then mail it in. Then visitor stickers are at the community center, Monday through Friday, nine to two. And at the chamber, seven days a week, Monday through Friday, nine to four, Saturday, nine to two, and Sunday, ten to two. I'm not allowed to have people in, so we're doing it through a takeout window. So we're all safe and compliant with all of the protocols that I need to follow in order to do that. And then finally, the other thing that the chamber is doing, we're giving out welcome bags. Since we can't have visitors or residents in to receive the information that they like, I have a table out front that I have been making bags with all the information. Conservation trails, bike trails, the magazine, all kinds of information. Many of our members are giving all kinds of swag. The jellies from Cape Cod Harvest Jellies are there. So we're welcoming people into Harwich the right way. And I think that's all that I have for now.
Thank you, Cindy. Just one addition to beach stickers, you can print the form out, and there's a drop box at the, here at Town Hall, that you can leave it there as well. We'll wait until next week, because certainly there's a lot more traffic around. I guess, is there any questions for Cindy, comments? Michael?
Just back to the COVID, if we could. Joe, Cultural Center, any idea on reopening on the Cultural Center for the tenants and being able to collect that rent again? That's one. And then the second would be ball fields. I was contacted by Little League, who want to start some of their summer camps, for lack of a better word. And they want to know when they'll be able to use Sanyo Baldwin Field and some of the other fields in town.
So with Cultural Center, actually, for both, I'm going to turn it over to Megan. I know with the buildings, before a building can open, we have to make sure we have the distances, the signage and all that, as well as cleaning services. So Megan, if you can speak to our target, David Cultural Center, and I don't know if you heard the question about ball fields?
Sure. So Cultural Center is just waiting for signs. We just get our signs up, the last of them today in Town Hall. Tomorrow, I'm going to the community center, and I'm doing a training video online, so we can push it out to all employees. That's part of the, by July first requirement, is to make sure all employees are trained. Cultural Center, I would say, as soon as the signs are up and Link can commit a daily custodian to that building is, is, that's the only thing holding it up. And I would anticipate by Monday, possibly Wednesday at the latest. Ball fields are open now. They're, they were open beginning of phase two. As far as team sports go, there are lots of restrictions right now on tournament play, so people can get together and practice certain sports. Baseball is one of those, you can get together and practice, but you're not allowed to have games or scrimmages right now. That's in phase three. So as early as July sixth, we could see tournaments start to get scheduled. But as far as I know, the ball fields are open and not locked.
Perfect. Thank you, thank you.
Ed?
One last facility, the art shacks?
Yeah.
The Artisan Shacks at Harbor.
I know one of the.
I would treat those as retail. They take care of their own space, I would imagine. So if we have, if we have tenants there, they would just need to follow the retail rules of, those are so small, I would say one person at a time.
Okay. Yeah, we have, I don't know how many, but I know, was it, one of the tenants who's due to start up on July first called me and wanted to know if it was a go or not. And I can tell her it is. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Megan.
And again, for those facilities, that's where we're hoping to do a big announcement middle of the week, of this week. As soon as we know we can certify, we're going to get them open.
We'll move on next. We have a public comment. Scott, is anyone anxious to weigh in now on any of these items so far?
I'm sure, I have no emails requesting access to the meeting. I do see a couple of people who've joined the meeting, and I'm not sure what their causes. So if you want, we'd be open to them, propel a comment.
Yes, please, if they're, if these items are the ones they want to speak to.
Well, we give them just a second. I'll remind anybody who's watching or listening that if you do wish to speak at some point, you can send an email to comment@town.harwich.us. So I'll leave it to you, Mr. Chairman.
We'll move on, if they contact you, we'll give them a chance to comment when they, when they're ready. Moving on to the, moving on to the consent agenda?
Consent agenda, the October fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen minutes are going to be removed for the time being, until some corrections that need to be made. But approval of the October seventh, two thousand and nineteen minutes. Do you want to vote on that, or do you want to?
I think we can go on to the next item as well.
B, vote to approve the interim town administrator's recommendation to grant permission of N-Star Eversource for the purpose of installing approximately twenty-five feet of conduit and cable and one handheld fifty-three slash twenty-three A in Town Road to provide electrical service to customer at ninety-four Forest Street, subject to the conditions from staff.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so approved, except for the October fifteenth.
Correct.
And we'll bring those back with a few corrections. Moving to, next is new business, and first on the item is fiscal year 2020 budget transfers. And Joe, are you, we got. And Joe, are you, we got Carol here as well.
Finance Director and Chairman of the Finance Committee.
Carol, I'll turn it over to you, and I see Dana's here as well, then, I assume.
All right, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
The, the budget transfers that you have before you this evening were reviewed by the Finance Committee on June 11 at their meeting. They were approved by the Finance Committee. And I have six budget transfers for your review and consideration this evening. Would you like to go through each one of them individually?
I'm not sure. Do we need to do that individually? I would like some background in, and what drives this, moving from capital item to reserve, you know, some of those. It's the same amount of money, but what, what, what makes that, why are you doing it? Get to the bottom line.
That's a very good question. So the Massachusetts Uniform Accounting System, that's directed by the Department of Revenue, requires us to categorize expenses in particular areas. So if it's a capital purchase, the guidance that we are provided tells us that you cannot take it out of a repair or maintenance line item, that it, it is properly categorized as a capital outlay. So that's one example. When the insurance premiums increase unexpectedly, we cannot take that expense out of, let's say, for example, I'm just, I'm just using this as an example, a salary line item for a position that wasn't filled. We need to properly categorize these expenses in the categories in which they, they are, or they should be expended from. So that's the purpose of all of these transfers.
So for a layman's purposes, it's really, to put them in different categories, more than, it sounds like we're transferring money from one place to the other. It's more of a categorizing them to better define what they're used for, I take it.
Correct. That is correct. Because if you, if the board or any department, including the Finance Department, wanted to look back on expenses, historical expenses, to have them properly categorized is very important. It's important for, to be able to project for the future, and it's important to be able to categorize items for, let's say, for your assets that you're going to capitalize over a number of years.
Thank you, Carol. Does anyone feel the desire to go through each of these, or I would entertain a motion to, Michael?
Just a question on the Finance Committee vote, six to one. Can someone tell me who the six other people to vote on the budget transfers were?
Yes, I can tell you who was in, who was, attended the meeting. Unless Dana and you, Lush, you'd like to speak to this.
Yeah, I can. I voted, John voted, Angelo voted, Mark voted, Tom voted, Dan voted, Brian voted. Dale was not there.
Go ahead, Michael.
Okay, just to follow up on that, and I'm sorry to call it out, but unfortunately, this is the forum that's allowed to, or provided for us to call it out. Dana, how come you voted on the budget transfers when one of them directs the DP, is directly related to the DPW?
Mr. Chairman, if I can just quickly, I saw that as well. I sent Dana an email Friday asking him to explain. He did respond today, but I didn't have time to present it. Knowing that he'd be here this evening, I figured I'd let him speak to it. But I did want the board to know that I picked up on that and asked the very same questions.
Thank you. And I, and I asked, I asked because I was asked and because there was a person that was on a call with us less than a month ago that was questioning the very same thing. So please explain.
Understood. I, I, it was explained to us that this, the sixth request, which was the reimbursement for the tornado funds, was going back into an administrative account. And I asked specifically if they was going back to the individual budgets listed. And was told, no, they were not going back. It was going back to administration. So in that case, I didn't have a conflict. I have since, in order to make sure that the best interest of the town is served, I have since put that question to the Ethics Commission directly, just to make sure that I'm on good ground here or not. And have had one phone conversation with an attorney there and have not received a final rule from then. But again, in the best interest of the town, we have a meeting July 9 scheduled, just to make sure that there's, we certainly don't want to mess this one up. It's too much money. I'll have the board revote it without me being involved, just to make sure. But I have not heard back directly from Ethics yet as to whether or not I have a conflict. The money did not go back to DPW, at least as it was explained to me. Any work that I did as an employee, I have been paid for, unless nothing was ever subject to any kind of transfer or anything like that. I'm whole and do not gain anything one way or another by this vote. So I thought I was okay. I'm double checking with the source. They're the ones who decide whether there's a violation or not directly. And going from there. But I do plan to have the committee revote it if that's necessary. If I don't hear from them or it's some sort of change we have to make. No problem.
Michael, you have a follow up?
Yeah, just follow up. And I don't want it, you to think that I'm calling it out and thinking you have anything to gain, because I certainly do not think you have anything to gain. I just know that this was, this was looked at. There's several people that were in disagreement to you going back on the Finance Committee because of the way you work. So I think it's important to be as transparent as we possibly can with this. So thank you for the answer. I guess the question now is to Carol, to fund the purchase of a used 2002 Mack truck from capital outlay rather than maintenance repair. And now tornado funds were just used. Joe, maybe you could explain it, maybe Carol can explain it. Are we spending the tornado funds now on things? Is that what we're doing?
And those are separate. Go ahead.
I don't know if I'm reading it wrong. I'm just trying. Somebody just mentioned tornado funds. Can someone explain to me why we're doing this out of capital outlay? And is the money part of tornado funds?
I can help explain that. Early in the fiscal year, that 1998 vehicle or equipment needed to be replaced. It was very early in the fiscal year. It really hasn't, it has nothing to do with tornado funds. It was certainly after the tornado had hit. And, and my request to the TPW Director and to the then-town administrator was to properly categorize this. Honestly, it has nothing to do with tornado funds. All of the tornado expenses that the town incurred were categorized under administration. They were not categorized anywhere in DPW. So these are two different issues altogether. One was the need to replace a piece of equipment that was causing excessive and costly repairs. And the other was all related, the $844,000 is all related to the expenses that were associated with cleaning up the tornado, which was not just DPW, it was police and fire and many other departments that were certainly involved in those expenses. And that is why they were categorized under administration, to be able to capture all of the costs.
Okay, just to follow up, if I may. The 2002 Mack truck, how much did that cost? And it was obviously after town meeting vote. Where did the money come from? So how much did that cost, and where did the money come from?
So it cost $23,400. We're asking you, so the money was, they had, the department had money budgeted in maintenance and repair of various vehicles and equipment. And there are certainly budgeted figures for repairs of all types of equipment within the town. But it just didn't make any sense anymore to continue to repair a piece of equipment that, that was not going to be successful. And so that was why the decision came down to replace the equipment. And, and that's why we're asking you now to transfer the money from maintenance and repair, where there are funds there to support that.
So the actual transfer is being done from the maintenance and repair to purchase the vehicle?
Correct. That's correct.
That's all I needed. Thank you.
If that's it, I entertain a motion to approve this as one packet.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Carol.
Thanks, Carol.
You're welcome.
Next is discussion, Joe, on temporary seasonal COVID-19 code inspector.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item, I'm going to turn it over to Meghan Eldridge, but it's a follow up. As you know, we talked last week about the Technology Task Force that I had assembled during COVID-19. Remote work, there was a similar Health and Occupational Safety Task Force, of which Meghan was a big part of that. And from that, we have this request for a temporary position. I do support it. It's related to COVID-19 inspections. Specifically, given all of the requirements that have been coming out of the state and the federal government, this position's needed for us to get a handle on going around to all the places, making sure they're, they're meeting their obligations. As you can see in the packet, Meghan has outlined everything. I will turn it over to her for her presentation, but I do support the request.
Meghan, you want to follow up with this?
Yes, thank you, Larry. So I'm requesting a temporary seasonal full-time inspector. And this inspector is proposed to do COVID-related inspections, mainly food, food establishment inspections. As you know, we get many, many complaints. And I would say 75 to 80% of them are related to food service and overcrowding or staff not using face masks or hand washing and things like that. We do have other COVID type of inspections that we have to do. They, they involve swimming pools, camps, and even just regular businesses that we get complaints about. We, right now, have one full-time and one part-time inspector, plus myself. And right now, we are still taking on our normal day-to-day health department duties. They have not slowed down even a little bit. We're still doing a record number of building permit reviews, septic permit reviews, real estate inspection transfer reviews. And then now it's summertime, so we're on top of that, doing our tobacco control inspections, our swimming pool inspections. And we're taking over, when a beach sample fails, we have to go back out and re-sample the beach. So our day-to-day tasks haven't slowed down even a little. And we are overwhelmed with complaints and need to make sure businesses are complying with COVID standards. So I'm asking for a temporary person, not full-time year-round, just full-time until October, when the seasonal businesses slow down. I do recognize that this is a CARES Act reimbursement-eligible position. And Barnstable County did have a ad in the paper for similar positions. And after speaking with them, they're looking to hire three to five individuals to cover towns across the Cape to do something very similar. However, it would be a maybe once, once-a-week person. I'm guessing if they are able to fill the positions, they would be able to provide us with possibly one person per week. So one, one day a week from mid-July through the end of August. It's usually a younger person who does, does go back to school. So I, the county recognizes we need these. I just, I need something more than a half to a full day in order to cover our needs in Harwich. So that's what I'm asking for. The county's hourly wage that they were proposing is $25 an hour. And I'm proposing something similar. If it needs to go into a union position, we can look at what that rate is. Or if it's completely separate, non-union, I know I'll talk to Joe and Bob about that. But around $25 an hour is what I'm looking for. And at $35, 35 hours a week for 16 weeks, it's approximately $14,000. That's what I have for you.
Meghan, you make a good case. My question is, what's the chances of finding someone?
I think the more we pay, the greater the likelihood is. So if we, if we put in at $25 an hour, I don't think we're going to see very many. This position's going to get beat up. I'm, I feel beat up myself, and I'm not even going out to all these places on a daily basis. So it's, it's going to take a little bit of money to get someone to do this. So hopefully, we can get someone. And that's all we can do is hope and ask. Or otherwise, our regular day-to-day tasks go by the wayside for a while, which is unfortunate.
Do you, in a position like this, do you network through your health connections? There's an ad, or how do you proceed?
I would propose to put an ad in the paper, but we also have the Mass Health Officers Association that does advertise for employment opportunities. And we're able to put it out to some of the grad schools. BU and UMass have School of Public Health grad schools, and they have employment boards. And I may get some luck doing that.
Other questions or comments for Meghan? Michael?
My question is more directed at you. Our CARES Act fund was just over $1 million. What were the deadlines on submission to get that $1,699,000? And can we continue to add to it as we go?
So the, to the last question, yes, we can add to it, up to that amount of $1,690,000. There was a deadline initially of June 5, then June 12. And in between that, Division of Local Services came out and gave guidance and said that if your municipalities wanted to do it later, early fiscal year '21, that's allowed as well. What they were talking about is, you know, figure out your real actual costs, as we're trying to do with the laptops that we talked about, positions such as this, the disinfection and all that, and then put in. But it is also a rolling application, if you will.
I guess, I guess at some point, it'd be nice to see what we've applied for, how much is left in the pool? Because I'm not hearing with any real certainty that these things that we're voting on are going to be reimbursable. So earlier tonight, we spent $80,000 plus to get the bathrooms cleaned. Now we're talking about another $14,000. And I'm concerned with what, I, I don't think that there's a question that, that we need help in the health department right now. I really don't. But if I had to make a decision to pay for it right now, based on the current deficit and knowing that we weren't getting reimbursement, I have to vote no. Thinking that we're going to get reimbursement is, it's promising. But if it's only that we're thinking it, I think I need to know a little bit more. Or at least hear that we think we're going to get reimbursed for this.
So I would say, anytime that there was a concern. So if you remember the laptops last week, the laptops are something that we're doing for accelerated telework capacity. We know that there's CARES Act funding. We don't know that there's going to be FEMA funding. The disinfecting services, we know is covered under CARES Act. We know that health inspector and the COVID-19 monitors that we did prior to the beach season, these are all covered because we didn't anticipate them, didn't budget for them, and have to do them in response to COVID. And so there's a two or three-page list of items that are understood to be CARES Act eligible. The instances where I hesitate are when there's the asterisk, and that's related to the FEMA. So we know that these are items that we can put in for reimbursement.
Okay. Follow-up question is just, this person is going to be, if it's 35 hours a week, Joe, doesn't that qualify them for benefits? Or does it not, because there's a definitive amount of time, that they'll only be working until October?
So we're, we're looking at this as a personnel bylaws, temporary seasonal. And we have others that are at that level.
Okay. And then given the office space limitations, Meghan, you have one full-time, one part-time, plus yourself. Where is... Where is this person going to live, and how are we going to, how are you going to delegate their responsibilities?
So, we do have, if you remember upstairs, Charlene's old office is where I'll be moving into, and Katie will be moving, my assistant will be moving into my office, leaving the larger office where Mark and Katie currently are. And both Mark and this person are inspectors, and they're out, they will be out in the field 90% of their time, so they will have very little overlap in the office. So, that's how I'm proposing to put them, in order to meet the 50% capacity. We will have room that way. And then, the other question, it will take a few days' worth of training on my part to get them up and running, but once they're trained, they will have a list of things to do every week, and it will be very little oversight on my part unless further enforcement is needed. And that's when I would need to step in, just as if they weren't here anyway. So, I will delegate the tasks to them on a weekly basis.
Michael?
Okay. Lastly, given the $35, I would agree that we should advertise higher than Barnstable County is, if we have any shot at getting anybody. Two questions with that. Is that going to upset the tone with anybody that's currently working? Are we going to be putting somebody over somebody? And then, the last would be, do we need to get another vehicle? Is this, are we going to advertise this? Is they're going to be driving their own vehicle? Because we've heard lately that we have a limited amount of vehicles in the parking lot that people are willing to drive.
Well, we would have to either reimburse them for mileage, or use the town vehicle that's there. We only have one that we are able to use in the Health Department. The other ones are spoken for, and we do use ours whenever we go out for inspections. And what was the first part of your question?
Just to make sure that we're not putting somebody's salary that we're hiring now for.
Right.
And that's been thought about with who you already have.
The two inspectors that we already have, the senior health agent and the part-time inspector, already make more than this. The lower of the two is in the $35-an-hour range. So, they, this position, if we come in at, say, $30 an hour, won't cause any problems.
And if I can just add, there was discussion as to whether the part-time employee would be willing to expand to full-time. The answer was, they're fine where they're at.
Thank you.
Yes.
Time is of the essence. Someone's going to escape from us. I entertain a motion to, and I think the question and the motion, do we, if someone wishes to make it, do we, is it to our benefit to also cap what we think the salary should be? I think we've talked $30, 30 what? 25 to 30. $30 may be more reasonable. And I think, Joe, you, and you'd also, if this motion is made and we move forward, you would sort out the union questions that Megan mentioned?
Correct.
Does anyone care to make a motion? I guess not at this point.
It's hard to make a motion without knowing the dollar parameters.
What information, what more information do we need to move on this?
What do we want to see as the cap?
Well, I think if we spoke, I think, Michael, you mentioned reasonable cap, maybe 30. That's above what the, gives a fair chance of hiring someone.
30 for the half-year?
Yeah.
I'd move that we go forward with the recruitment not to exceed $30,000.
No, $30 per hour.
$30, yeah, an hour.
Is there a second? Is there any other discussion? Thanks for that. Is there, I'll take a vote then. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Post?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay. So, four bold and one abstaining. Thank you for that. You know by Megan, how hard is this for us right now with all the budget uncertainties, but this is a, we wish you luck in recruiting someone.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, it's Carol Coppola.
Go ahead.
Under new business A, item A, there were two items on the, within that area. One of them was the monthly spending plan for the month of July of 2020.
I skipped over that. You want to go back to that? Carol, you want to go back to that?
Sure, that would be great. Thank you. I have prepared the monthly spending plan for the month of July of 2020. I provided the board with an example of how that was, or the steps that I took in order to prepare to prepare that monthly spending plan. It is slightly different than it was last week, due to new information that I received, such as the Town's insurer for property and liability insurance, MIA, has allowed communities to extend the time in which they had to pay the annual premiums to September. So, I have removed those from the July spending plan. I also updated information with regard to the actual snow and ice funding for FY19 that was approved at Town Meeting of '19. I have based this on, I started with the FY20 budget, and then based it on information that I had from school districts, and information on actual debt that is going to be expended for the month. The Water Department, or the Water Enterprise Fund, or the Water Commissioners, exactly, have already voted their July spending plan. So, I've included that here for you. I've also included some explanations of what are the significant increases, and those include the annual contribution to Barnstable County retirement, the annual insurance premiums for the marina coverage, as well as injured-on-duty claims, the premium for that, and then the assessment to Monomoy Regional School District, which will be due in July. This 112 budget, or the monthly spending plan, has to be approved by the Department of Revenue prior to July 1st. I have provided a memo, a sample memo for you as well, to the town clerk, if you choose to vote this evening, to be able to provide the town clerk with the authority to certify your results. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Carol?
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Joe?
Carol, in your packet on page four, you indicated the board need only approve the spending plan for the general and sewer enterprise funds. Should that be stated expressly in the motion? That there are, that the board is approving the monthly spending plan for the general and sewer enterprise funds?
Sure, that's fine. Thank you.
Ed?
Mr. Chair, without any further comment, I'd move that we approve the monthly spending plan for July 2020 for the general and sewer enterprise funds, in the amount of $10,551,371.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion?
Yeah, but general enterprise fund is the water enterprise fund. We don't have a general.
Right, Water Enterprise Fund.
General and Water Enterprise Fund is what I said.
So, the, in the packet on page four, it was stated that the Board of Selectmen need only approve the monthly spending plan for the general and sewer enterprise funds.
Okay. Sewer enterprise funds, then.
That's the motion. We have a second to it. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carol, I admire your work on this. It seems like it's complicated, and it changes every time you send a, anytime I look at, there's some other new factors involved.
Well, thank you. I mean, the factors do change too, on a daily basis, so we're just keeping up with the times, right?
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Next agenda item is approve the, we have two. Well, we'll take first one, the DPA perks common vicular license.
So, Mr. Chairman just advised the board that on the agenda, there's a Scrivener's error. The correct address is referenced in the packet of 545 Route 28, Harwich Port.
Okay. Got it. Michael?
I move that we approve Go Industries DBA perks common vicular's license renewal for 545 Route 28, Harwich Port.
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved. Next is the same DBA perks for renewal entertainment license. Michael?
I move that we approve Go Industries DBA perks weekday entertainment license renewal, 545 Route 28, Harwich Port, 11:30 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. inside and outside.
Is there a second?
Second.
If it's consistent with?
Yeah, recorded or, I missed part of it. Recorded and/or live music with amplification system and dancing, consistent with past license and restrictions.
And governors regulate current.
I think all these have been that, we almost take it for granted now, it's consistent with the COVID directions we have.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for.
So, we've already got a second, so I would just say that we're approving the license for the year. At our last meeting, we discussed not including that in the motion, that we include, that we did have consensus that it would go out in a memo from administration with the license.
That was my point, is we've agreed to that. Ed?
And the other correction over what's in the agenda, it's 545 Route 28. In the agenda, it's listed as 656 Route 28.
It's the same place.
Just as long as the ad's consistent with previous restrictions.
Dancing? When did we approve dancing?
Michael?
We have approved dancing in the past. I believe the Irish pub last week, I think dancing was on their application as well.
Was it?
I know we did get an email from one resident today that's been involved in the Harwich Port, the committee related to Harwich Port, and I would argue that every one of those businesses that has entertainment, people dance. So, I think he just put it in his application, but I think it's reasonably assumed, if you're going to watch a band play, or listen to music, that you may dance.
Really?
So, I.
I was unaware of that.
Yeah. So, I have no problem with it.
And I heard the address corrected by Michael on the motion.
I read the motion at 545.
So, to recap, you're going to have any previous restrictions.
Yeah, I added that.
All right. It's been a motion and a second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Moving on, next to is a, Joe, you might want to speak to this, but it's Natural Resources, and as you read, this is for help to keep our shellfish lab going. I know Heinz has already cut back drastically in bringing back two volunteers, or two temporary folks that have been long users of experience. I would argue that this is a critical to the town. They seed a lot of shellfishing, and I hate to see that shut down entirely. It's an expense of 70, low under $7,600, so it's not a major expense. But if this, I would entertain a motion if anyone else have questions for Joe on this. Michael?
I guess my only question is, I think two weeks ago, we accepted a gift of $15,100.
For this, yeah.
$4, whatever it was, $15,000.
Yeah.
Is that money, is it potentially that that money could be used for this? Or is that, was there a stipulation in the donation that it would only be used for purchase of product, or purchase of?
I don't know what stipulated. I know it was for the purchase of the, what do we call the small?
Seed.
The seed.
I didn't realize that the, I thought the donation was just a donation to the lab.
These are excellent questions, and that's why Heinz is able to join us remotely.
Great. Heinz, I spoke for you then. Go ahead, come explain this to us.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? It's Heinz.
We can.
Okay. Well, I'll talk about a few things. I'll cover some of the questions that were just presented. So, the town does run a shellfish lab, and we have for the last, oh, 26 years. And for the last 23, I've always been able to hire high school students and a teaching supervisor to help manage and maintain that lab, you know, during the six, the seven weeks that it really needs that additional, you know, help to maintain it, run it, clean it, measure clams, and so forth. I think it was Mike that just asked about the donation that we received last week. That was stipulated for the purchase of shellfish seed. Now, that would be oysters, cohog, soft shell, without a, you know, end date, meaning it doesn't all need to be spent right away, but it was directed towards the purchase of seed. Within the Natural Resources budget, there is some money allocated for the purchase of seed as well. We also get some seed through Barnstable County Cooperative Extension at no expense to us or a municipality, and so we do receive a portion of money for that seed. The lab starts out in the June timeframe, in about a week here, with the equivalent of about $8,000 worth of seed. And what we plant in the recreational and commercial shellfishing areas by end of September and October has a value of excess of $40,000. So, we get a five-times bang for the buck in that regard. But some of that is due to the energy and personnel that we put into the lab. The request that you see in front of you is to allocate the line item within my budget that is there for hiring a teaching supervisor and three interns, but with the recent COVID, social distancing and so forth, my request is to rehire the same supervisor that I had last year, because there's no really hands-on direction needed. We can communicate by email, text, phone calls, you know, notes in the logbook. I don't presently have to be there side-by-side. I will still go there, of course, on other days and in afternoons, or alternate my schedule as such. But it really requires a second person, which I thought would be advantageous, if I were to be able to hire, then, in this case, it's her husband, because they live together. And again, that makes it easy for the social distancing. So, I'll stop now and answer some other questions.
Questions for Heinz? Joe?
Just a statement, Mr. Chairman. So, I would argue that normally, this would have come under the COVID-19 update, as Heinz's plan for resumption of activities. But given the aspect here that it's from one primary person with three interns, and now two people, excuse me, I did ask him to put this in writing and present it to the board. I completely support his request. He's been very creative in difficult circumstances to make sure that the town of Harwich maintains its commitment to the shellfishing aquaculture world, and to continue that operation. And I think he's done it in a very creative way, because he's identified two individuals that are in the same pod, if you will, from health circumstances. So, he has the two individuals able to work, and to continue the process at no risk to those individuals. So, to me, this is a resumption of his program, and I do support it completely.
Okay. Michael?
I move that we approve Natural Resources Director Heinz Proff's request to rehire shellfish lab seasonal staff not to exceed $7,556.40.
Other discussion? Michael?
I want to point out that this is also a food source for quite a few people. People do this and eat them, and thank you, Heinz, for the great program.
I appreciate all that support, and, Mike, you hit the nail right on the head. In fact, it falls under one of the governor's essential services, the labor, to produce aquaculture, as well as agriculture. And in my supporting documentation, I added the sense that, you know, Harwich sells approximately 400 shellfish permits a year, and we're already, to June, and we've touched 300 already in six months. So, we've already seen an increase in permit sales, and that's just due to the time people have on their hands, or ability to get outside, there is social distancing there, it is a food source. So, on multiple levels, it's a good thing that we're continuing to do what we're proposing to do. Thank you.
Ed?
And I'd be remiss not, Heinz on YouTube, is the song still up?
Yeah, absolutely right. You know, back, I think it was 2010, 2011, we created a shellfish lab with those interns at the time, a kind of a self-awareness, and promoted the lab. This was before we had town website and so forth. the lab. This was before we had town website and so forth, and yeah, that's one way to look at how the program runs. We've had in excess of 8,000 people visit and tour the lab. I'm going to hold back on that. Usually when that door is open, it says free tours, but I think just for the remainder of this summer, I, I don't think we'll be doing that. But it's certainly a gem there at Wichmer Harbor, and there is that YouTube. You just look up Shellfish Lab Song, Harwich, it's there.
And it is a wonderful song.
Thank you.
No other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. It's proved unanimously. The next item on the agenda was to review the Assistant Town Administrators. I would like to postpone that for the time being. This came to my attention, Joe brought to my attention a couple weeks ago, that his first year expired May 20th, and we should look at moving forward. However, this has gotten too complicated with the confusion or trying to judge someone based on Assistant Town Administrator, Town Administrator's role, and so I'd like to postpone that for a while. Other discussion? Michael?
Just confused by the confusion. Maybe you could elaborate? Or whoever's against rating him, maybe they could elaborate?
The, well, I'll put my elaboration is, is that people had some, some difficulty trying to decide whether they should rate him as Assistant Town Administrator, since he's been doing the Town Administrator's role, going back and forth and felt uncomfortable doing so. I know, Michael, you did, I did, but there was some uncomfortable doing that. I think that, Joe, quite frankly, is a little concerned from his perspective that was review, did that muddy the water as he is the application for the Town Administrator's role at the same time. So we had three things going on that made this discussion somewhat difficult to go forward with.
Okay. I guess my only point would be that the job description as Assistant Town Administrator caused you to be the acting town administrator in the absence of a town administrator? So, I mean, I did my review.
I did. I appreciate that.
You obviously got a passing review, and, and I would certainly think that we should make a public statement that he got a passing grade.
He got.
As a Assistant Town Administrator, doing his job, based on his job description.
I appreciate that, because the three folks that did, were all very positive, passing. So in doing this, there's nothing negative in that. They come out of that review. That's critical to say that.
Thank you.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have no horse in the race, because I didn't do the rating, as I said, but one thing that was still hanging out as an issue that everybody should still be aware of is regardless of whether he was the interim town administrator or the Assistant Town Administrator, nobody at the department level would have their ratings be brought publicly into a meeting. Nobody. So that, that changes, that changed the territory also, because in doing this, you'd be rating somebody who would have been rated privately by a supervisor, and it would have been subject to the open meeting law restrictions for divulging that. I mean, that's not really eligible under, for information as a subordinate person. The direct hires would have been.
Fair point.
Okay, so I appreciate it. Steve?
I would agree with Don, but I am happy to have Michael and all of us indicate our support for Joe and our support of him and of the, of the performance that he has given us, so.
All right. And I really appreciate that, because the way this landed, my intentions were good, but it kind of got crossways, but I didn't want that to be, in this discussion, be any negative aspect of that.
I'll join that statement.
Okay, moving then, Joel, to the Town Administrators' reports.
Thank you. In addition to the items you have in the packet first, I think you have, let me see here, it should be the.
Request for change in entertainment licenses?
Yep. So that was just to advise the board, because we got a call late in the week that the applicant for those establishments had actually put, filled out the application in error, so they've asked for a correction. So I wanted the board to be aware that we got this, but it requires a, a new hearing, as we learned earlier in the year for the Seal Pub, that because the board had conducted a hearing and done it, we need to do a hearing to correct it. So this will be coming up as soon as we can meet all the hearing requirements.
What was the mistake?
The, the timeframe that they put in for, they were indicating that they were looking for entertainment from 11:30 to midnight, 11:00 to midnight, inside, 11:30 to 10:00 outside, I think on their application that they had indicated, for one of them, I think, 6:00 p.m.
And this, this was for whom then?
For two establishments, the Port and Amber.
Can you run, answer Michael's question again? I may have been daydreaming. What was the change?
So their original applications, their hours were earlier than what they intended.
So they actually reduced the number of hours that they're asking for?
It was an error on their part when they filled out the application.
I think we voted in full, full length, though. I thought we voted those till.
I thought we did, too.
I thought we voted those till 10:00 p.m.
All right, so I can work with staff to confirm that, but just wanted you to be aware that this came up, and we can correct it either by hearing or by staff, if the board's okay with that. The next item is, as I've told you before, anytime I have a contract that is $25,000 or less and I'm authorized to sign, I would, but I would also update you, so you can see in the packet. This one really caught my attention, because the misplaced comma caused me to read that as a $60,000 contract, and it's a contract for $601.92. And this was related to the municipal vulnerability preparedness program. They had to make some changes based on COVID. I will also tell the board, I don't know if staff was able to get it to you, there is a, an insurance renewal. There's two separate aspects to it. The first one is for $6,500 for the insurance consultant that reviews our claims. It's relative to public safety injured on duty. So I did sign that for $6,500. And then the actual renewal proposal for insurance, which is under $25,000, was for $22,339. So I'll make sure that the board has copies of those documents that I signed as well. And then, last but not least, and as you heard, or as you discussed earlier this evening, the, the temporary hiring. We talked last week about a hiring and spending freeze rescission or anything to that effect. The board has, has offered to keep it in place, but I did advise department eds last week that if there are hiring and or spending issues, that they should inform the finance director and myself. I will tell you that I've heard from three departments, and that is related to the fire department for a firefighter, the police department for dispatcher, we talked about before, and the building department for an additional executive assistant position that's vacant. So I will be analyzing those and reporting back to the board.
Okay. Thank you, Joe.
And that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Before we move to the Selectmen's reports, I'll turn to Scott and see if we have the, I think he had two folks that may want to make a comment. I'll give him one last chance.
Mr. Chairman, those two people have joined the call already. One left a little bit earlier. I just see one, Mr. Banish, that has joined the call. I didn't know if he had a particular interest in speaking. I have not received any specific emails requesting to speak.
Okay. If he wishes to speak, now would be the time.
I agree.
Tom? Tom Banish? Nope.
Well, you're muted, Tom, if you're trying to talk.
I'm here. I'm just, I just wanted to watch the meeting tonight and kind of familiarize myself with what you folks are doing. I'm a candidate for the position of Town Administrator.
Okay. Nice, nice meeting you. At least, well, that's probably an overstatement, since how I see the TV, but we'll go from there. Move to the Selectmen's reports. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Not because you and I are on this ballot, but the, the election is coming up a week from tomorrow, and I'm mentioning this because two things are happening. One is, the charter has two revisions that have already passed. The Attorney General's office already passed town meeting, and, and in order for them to actually become a charter change, and one of them is pretty important, well, actually, they're both pretty important. One establishes water wastewater commission, and the other one really radically alters the, the way we do our capital budget.
Right.
So with that, the reason I brought it up is it's a very different situation from normal. It's truncated voting hours, and if you wanted to get an absentee ballot, it would be wise to do it by now, in order for that to happen.
Yeah. Thanks for bringing that up, Don, because my fear is not many people are going to take the time to vote.
I might beat you six to five if things don't work out well.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, the polling hours are 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Tuesday, June 30th, at the community center.
Okay. Thank you, Jill. Ed?
No, just a comment, you know, with the testing regime that we had conducted last week, having had, attended some of the rallies, that large gatherings that they referred to, I felt it probably should go and get tested, and, but not wanting to add to what may have been a traffic nightmare in Harwich Port. I went up to Wellfleet to be tested, and partly also being a member of the Board of Directors of Outer Cape, just wanted to see how they handled it, and it was as smoothly run up there as it was in Harwich, much less of a turnout up there. The testing process is an interesting one to go through, with the swab down, down your nose. You close your eyes, and it sort of brings back memories of sort of bad sci-fi films with aliens.
I think you're sharing.
But it's, it's not, not painful at all, and I think, I think it'll add, if you have a chance to get tested, it can only help us get past this all.
Thank you, Ed. Michael?
I'm all set.
Steve?
I got nothing.
I'm all set.
I'll send you to adjourn.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, and thank you.